It is 5:31 on August 3rd, 2017. This is a regular city council meeting. And I am Rich Nagel, Mayor. I'll be presiding at the meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We will have roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Hyland.
Here.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Here.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
For councilmembers present, Councilmember Batchor had contacted me early in the day. She will not be present this evening. To my left is interim city administrator Elvaback, right?
Yeah.
I'll get it.
Yep.
And to my right is city attorney Arnison. And with that, we're going to move to item three, approve the agenda. And there is some changes, so... Or there are some changes, I should say.
One addition.
One addition. Item 10 on the back, columbarium fees. That will be coming up at that point. Any other changes to the agenda? If not, motion is approved... Or motion is approved. Motion is in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Hattlestead to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion is carried. Move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the following items. Item A, approval of the July 17th regular meeting and July 24th special meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the bills. Item C, approval of 2017 service agreement, Arlington Area Ambulance and Service and Sibley County Agricultural Association, September 8th and 9th, 2017. Item D, acceptance of resignation, Michelle Halverson Parpart, paramedic. And item E, approval of final offer of employment, Scott Sandquist, police officer.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Hyland, second by Councilmember Cowell to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried. Let the minutes read that maintenance supervisor Wickworth is in attendance. There are no public hearings. We'll move on then to citizens addressing the council. Is there someone... The Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce did attempt to have somebody present this evening. I did express to them that at the last meeting we did not take action as the council was looking for someone to be present. Unfortunately, at the last minute, they were unable to get anybody. But according to Leah Paul, you were provided the information regarding their request. They are very interested in moving forward with the grant to the southern... Or for the Southern Minnesota Small Town Initiative Foundation Small Town Grant and would like the council to consider it and endorse, provide support.
Okay. And will that support come later in the... Or do we do it at this point?
You could certainly do it at this point as they do have an August 31st deadline to send their application. And, you know, whether it's just the board or the council's recommendation to approve the grant or support the grant or, you know, I can certainly prepare a letter on behalf of the council indicating that support to submit as well.
On motion, or is this just consensus?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Did you see the letter that Kurt May sent out?
That's what I was going to bring up.
Yes.
Are we approving the grant? Or are we approving where the money's going? What are we approving with this?
Well, I think you've got to apply first.
Yes, this is the application.
Okay, hasn't been applied for yet. Okay.
That's what we're approving, I believe.
And I think what Kurt was lobbying for, so to speak, is how it's used.
I would agree. I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was saying yes or no to.
So we just... Consensus is enough, or do we want a motion?
I think probably a motion would be most appropriate.
Okay. So then, our name... Area Chamber of Commerce would like to apply for a small town grant. And they are looking for city council approval or endorsement, I should say.
I would make a motion that the city council endorse the Chamber of Commerce Small Town Grant.
Application.
Application.
Application, okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Hyland, second by Councilmember Yashewski to endorse the Chamber of Commerce application for a small town grant. Is there any further questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion carried. And then we'll get down to announcements.
Couple familiar announcements. Just once again, that the Arlington Farmers Market continues through September in the community center parking lot. Also, tomorrow's the last day to apply for the leading Sibley Together Leadership Program. I did hear from Roxy Traxler, who oversees the applications. And as of today, I believe there's 27 applicants. So they are very impressed with the response they've gotten. And then a reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, September 4th, for Labor Day. And that will then move the council meeting to September 5th.
Okay. Any questions on that? I understand or I hear that the farmers market is being very well attended. Does anyone have any firsthand information on that?
Chris was up there Monday and talked to Julianne Shaw. And I think it said something like about 100 and some people came through. And I can't remember how many vendors, but the parking lot looked busy.
Good, 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 good.
And of course, she always seems to buy a bunch of stuff.
You would have to get that in there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know this is going to be on TV. All right, communications, anything on that?
No, I just supplied the June monthly financial report. Fairly self-explanatory. There was nothing that looked unusual or out of place. So as of now, the expenses and revenues appear to be on track, according to the budget.
Okay. Any questions on the financial report? Hearing none, we will skip number eight, then the annual report of the Ridgeview Sibley Medical Center. That will be moved on to a future date.
Correct.
And item nine, first reading ordinance 313. Another installment of that.
Chapter 26 Towers, it's a rather elaborate chapter regulating tower placement in Arlington. We don't have towers in Arlington. But when cellphone towers in particular started to mushroom up around the county, it was perceived that we should get ahead of the issue. And primarily, I think it was our zoning consultant, Cynthia Smith-Track, that put this together. And it is very thorough. And basically, I just re-indexed it to fit into our code. Chapter 27 Trees, that included some previous ordinances and a fairly recent update. And that, of course, regulates trees within the city and disposal of diseased trees, et cetera. And again, this is considered a first reading of those chapters. I welcome any comments, questions from the council as we continue with this process. And just a little side note, somehow it dawned on me that I was departing from the alphabetical order of the chapters. And these are submitted as chapters 26 and 27. I'm going to be resending them to you as chapters 27... 28 and 29. Because 26 and 27 will be S's that should go ahead of the Ts. Sorry about that. I, yeah. I've been approaching these in kind of various ways. And I came around to the idea that, well, why can't we have the index alphabetized, at least up to a certain point? Make it even easier to use. And so, I'm kind of going back and renumbering some things. So that's...
That's it.
Any immediate comments?
Just something I noticed. In chapter 26, it goes from 26.02 to 27.03.
What? 27.03?
But if you're going to change the numbers anyway, it probably doesn't matter.
Well, it's not going to be 27.
Right.
Okay, obviously a typo. So... Which proves someone read it.
There you go. Wow. Nice.
Thank you. I'll get that corrected right away.
Councilmember Cowell trying to make points again, huh? It worked. It worked. I'm sure if I would have read it, maybe I'd be able to answer this question I'm going to ask you. But does the city have any control over towers that are on fairground property?
Not specifically.
And it doesn't address those in that ordinance?
Well, not directly. Because again, we determined over the years that there's a special carve-out in state law that says that local jurisdictions can't exert zoning controls over the fairgrounds. But we do have the right to exert other general controls, like nuisance ordinances. And also, if it affects, for example, the traffic pattern for helicopters coming into the fairgrounds. We do have the right indirectly to regulate. We could, for example, appeal the erection of a tower outside city limits, anywhere, to the FAA. So we do have some indirect controls.
Thank you. Any questions, other questions in regard to these two items? All right. If not, that will go as first reading of the chapters on both towers and trees, 28 and 29, I believe. Moving on to item 10, resolutions, columbarium fees.
Yeah, as the council, where we now have the columbarium in place and as of August 1st, started selling the niches. And we've already had some interest. And I believe one has already been placed within a niche. So, yes, yes. So definitely some interest out there. But one of the things that, as we started doing this, we noticed while we have a fee for the niche, we don't have fees for some of the other services and items that come along with that. And so, this is a resolution just asking to set those fees. We... When staff looked at it, we looked at current fees in alignment with some of the burials in place, as far as some of the earned placement fee of $75. Because there's the potential of it happening on non-business... Regular business hours, there may be some overtime and on-call time. And so, there is an additional fee for those hours. And then the purchase of the plaques, there are some costs associated with that, as well as the memory wall plaque. So this is... This takes into account both the cost to the city for purchasing these items and our staff time, as well as some shipping costs and any additional fees that may come with purchasing those items.
Where did these numbers come from?
The earned placement is the same as the burial marking fee that we have. The non-regular business hours, we just took into consideration that there would be overtime and additional pay for staff for those. And so, that's why there is an additional cost with that. The plaques are based on the cost of the plaque. And then if you... If you're able to have all of the dates initially, that's one fee. But if you have... If you're purchasing like the birth dates and then at a later point, the death dates, those are... That's a plaque that we'd have to purchase separately, and that comes later. And so, that's why there's the different fees based on whether or not you're getting the full dates already placed or the full dates at a later point. Because there is some additional cost if you don't have all four dates initially. And then that also includes there's some additional shipping costs and stuff. And so, we did include that in there with the intent of trying to keep the shipping very minimal because they said they can... You can kind of save up and then reduce costs of shipping. So we went with kind of the assumption that we'll be able to reduce costs that way.
Did I understand right? For the earned placement, if it's during business hours, there's no added fee? But it's like on a Saturday?
If it's during business hours, it would be the $75. If it's after hours, outside of regular business hours, then it would be the 125. Because with the burials, my understanding is they're able to make that happen during business hours. We've got some more flexibility with that. Whereas with this, there's the potential that it would be happening...
Coming on a weekend or evening.
Correct. It could be happening outside of big business hours. And then we do have some additional wages and benefits that are... That accompany that. And all of this is... Will... The intent will be that this will then get placed on our fee schedule. And so then, once a year in January, you all have a chance to review. And so, we'll be watching this as it starts to see, you know, are we in alignment with those costs? Because the assumption was that more than likely, you may have someone come in and purchase a plaque with the two names and then the two birth dates. And then the death dates... The two death dates would come at a later time. And so, that was kind of the assumption that we went off of. But we will be tracking that so that if there needs to be an adjustment, that can happen.
Do we have a rule that if it's the niche, they bought it from us, they need to buy the plaques and things so there's conformity with...
Yes. It all has to go... Come through the city.
And that is a rule that Nelson Granite has. You buy the columbarium, you have to buy all the plaques through them also.
Yep. And I'm working on a... I'm working on a brochure that I thought might be helpful to kind of explain what the columbarium is and some of these fees and then some of the, you know, some of those additional rules and such so that that can all be laid out immediately.
And people can think about it ahead of time.
Correct.
Is that some brochure, the trifold or whatever could be put in with the city billing also?
Yeah.
Just to inform everybody?
Yes, it could.
With this fee structure, when it's full?
Yep.
With all the concrete work we've done, this, that, everything else, are we breaking even or a little above?
The... This... For this particular piece covered in these fees, this is just to cover our expense. The niches, when those were... When that fee schedule was set, that did have an additional add-on to go into the perpetual fund so that there would be that. So, yeah. That... There is a little bit of a difference between the two.
So we do have a fee for the niche?
Correct.
And this is for placement in the niche?
This is correct. Yep, yep. Then the niche that was approved maybe a month ago or so. And that, the fees were based on the location of the niche. Yep. And so, this is... Doesn't matter where those... Where the location is. It's what particular item you're going to be needing.
How many niches are there?
I believe there's a total of, what was it, 80? Yes, 80.
But then if two containers are in each niche, there's potential for 160 burials there, 160 interments.
Is that something that could fill up fast?
It could. I suppose it could. And that was the discussion the cemetery committee had was when pricing the niches, they said, well, you know, we need to look down the road so that when it's time to buy another columbarium, we don't have any trouble funding it out of current, you know, fund balances, out of...
Because we don't want to wait till it's full and then do it. Or we're three months behind right away.
Yeah.
We get up to within 30, 40, it's probably time to look at their movement to get another one.
Yep.
And just see how it's going.
So that's why part of the monies are going into the perpetual fund to fund the next one.
I move that we approve resolution.
Is there a number here?
This would be 70, I believe, is what it is.
It'd be the resolution fixing the fees and charges for the columbarium for the City of Arlington, Sibley County, Minnesota.
I will second that.
Councilmember Hyland introduced resolution number 70-2017. And it was seconded by Councilmember Hattlestead. And that is the resolution fixing the fees and charges of the columbarium for the City of Arlington, Sibley County, Minnesota. Is there any further questions? If not, vote by roll call, vote. Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead.
Yes.
Councilmember Hyland.
Yes.
All in favor? None opposed with one absent? And the resolution is adopted. Moving into unfinished business, project 13, tile 6A improvements.
Jason is unable to attend the meeting tonight, but he did supply some background as well as the bids that were received. As you can see from his letter, they did come in higher than the engineering estimate. But he still felt comfortable with them. He did share the bids with the watershed. And they reviewed it. And they are... They support awarding the project as provided. So that is... So we would like to move forward with that.
And that again is the project on the southeastern part of town that now drains the farm field or a portion of the drainage is a farm field that Vince Danielson owns. Right now, it drains into a tile line sort of in the backyards of all the houses that are on the north side of Freedom Drive, facing Freedom Drive. There's an old tile line goes back there. Now, it'd be switched, it would be hooked into the new tile line on the south side of Freedom Drive. And the tile line that is currently running in those backyards would stay there and become property of the city. And there is some repair work going on, some slip lining going on in a few spots also. So there's a few repairs to that quote-unquote "old" older line before the city takes it over.
So just to reiterate, the recommendation would be to dual contracting. And the bid contract amount is $165,126.70.
Now, is this our portion? Or is it the total?
I think that is the total, I believe. I don't know if the city portion is... It's about a 75-25% split, I think 75, if memory serves. I'm sure this is the total amount.
Yes.
Because bidding wouldn't have split it out at all.
The water said it's going to pick up a majority of that.
They're going to pick up, I think it's 90. And the city picks up the rest.
90% or 90,000?
90,000.
Which gets 75.
Don't hold me to that, but just 90 jumps into my mind as being the... It actually was something that was negotiated over many months as far as putting this together and arriving at who should pay for what.
So if they come up with 90,000, then we would have to come up with about 75.
75.
Yeah.
So was that... Does the 90,000 based off of the 141 of the engineer's estimate?
Um, no. Now, when you get to percentages, it is a percentage. The agreement was on a percentage because at that time, we didn't know what the bids would come in on. So they know that the dollars, you know, there's a high... The watershed board knows that the dollars are going to be higher. And they were comfortable with that. I think they just want to get it done. I'm looking here just to see if I have any recent breakdown from meetings of what that percentage was. Maybe it was a percentage. I don't know. The city has already expended $35,000 on the project in engineering fees, that type of thing. So that's already been done in the past year or two. So if our numbers are correct or approximately correct, that's 75,000. It would be... And you'd take the 34 off of it already that we've put in, so I remember that now.
We would take that off, off the 75?
Yep. That's that... The 35 that the city has already put in would come off the city's portion. I just can't find it right. I did find that number though, and that reminded me that... That that was one of the points. City's engineer has estimated the total project cost for this... Okay, I might be getting it close here now. "Consideration of other terms of the agreement, the parties agree that the stated repair costs for the project undertaken by the agreement shall be paid at 80% by the watershed district, 20% by the city." So it's an 80-20 split. And then off of our 20, you take the 34 off that we already paid.
So we're looking at 165.
It's costing the city about 28,000?
There we go.
About 28,000 because 80% is about 132. So it's going to cost us 28.
Additional.
Above and beyond. So that's higher than... So if we're... So in that 165, we're not counting the 35 we already spent?
We are not.
So actually, it's $200,000 when it's all said and done. But they're only paying 80% of the 165, not of the 200.
Correct.
We should get up to 80% of the 200. Well, it cuts our costs.
I liked your figure.
Huh? Well, that cuts our costs quite a bit. I know that's probably not negotiable, but...
All right, so this is the... You said the 35,000 comes off of... Oh, I see.
Now, 20% of 165 is what?
So the 35,000, they're paying no share of what's no percentage.
No, that's money the city has expended already. Yep, yep.
Did they have an expense that they paid comparable to the...
They have not paid any costs on that up to this point. Nope.
And they won't agree?
City had paid for the design, city had paid for it.
But they won't pay 80% of the total cost. I call the total cost $200,000. Because we got 165 plus the 35 we've already spent. So that's $200,000. They're not going to pay 80%. They won't pay 80%.
No, they're paying 80% of the 165.
So would that be 132,000?
Yeah, I thought what I had. 132,000. So it leaves us about 28.
28, yeah, yep.
I think it was 28,000 or something like that. Plus the 33, so it's really 63,000 for the city. That's really the city cost of $63,000. Unless someone's giving us 35,000. Unless someone's giving us thirty-five thousand, Arneson Law Firm or something maybe. We got a motion for that?
Give her a try.
And you can't vote on that response either. Hey, we gotta have a little fun.
Okay, so, um, I guess we've had a go-ahead from the watershed district.
Correct.
Now we need the, a go-ahead on this to move forward with the project. I, I think, did we take some, did we take some action on this pending? I can't remember if, this came up, I mean, when the bids came in, I thought we talked about it, but then Jason said he would still need to run the numbers past, past the watershed board before it could be approved.
Right, this was not brought formally to the council yet.
Okay.
Jason reviewed, reviewed the bids, and we looked at them, and then, then he went to the watershed before we brought it formally.
I know this was talked a lot about in my early council career, and I wasn't. It took a while to get up to speed, and I'm not sure I'm there yet.
It's been going on for years, hasn't it, Ross?
I would test it, if we don't approve it, if we approve it, it's gonna cost us twenty-eight thousand dollars more. If we don't approve it, we threw thirty-five thousand dollars away.
I guess you could say that.
Pretty much, that's about what it comes down to.
And is there?
We got no improvement.
I mean, is there some kind of agreement that we already agreed to in the past that we would, that, you know, this is what we were going to do?
What other choice do we have? That's what I'm figuring. We really don't maybe have a choice.
Yeah, it's, from what I understand, it's been an issue for years and years and years and years, and we're that close.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion for project thirteen six A tile improvements.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, we'll go with Yashewski.
Oh, come on.
Longer name.
That was a tie.
Harder to spell, too.
Harder to spell. Gee.
Just like you said.
Okay, motion by council member Hattlested, second by council member Yashewski to move ahead with the project thirteen tile six A improvements. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Alright, item number twelve, Johnson Controls update.
City council kindly authorized me to explore contract litigation attorneys to take a look at our situation with Johnson Controls for the purpose of evaluating whether we have a viable case, whether it's worth pursuing. And the League of Cities, by the way, the League has a staff of attorneys, but they only litigate matters that would come before the League Insurance Trust, you know, where cities are being sued for liability. They don't go the other direction. And the League did assign one of their litigation attorneys to research this and respond, and he has given me two candidates with their full backgrounds. They both sound excellent. So next step is I'm gonna contact each of them, ask them to let me know if they're willing to take a look at our contract and guarantee, and then we already have a synopsis of the history of this. And quote to them how many pages, and ask them to quote to us what they were charged to look at it and give us an opinion. And then I can bring that back to the council, so. By the way, assign one of their sharpest litigators to respond, attorney named Patrick Arneson.
Truly, are you serious, Ross?
Yeah.
Gee, I think it is.
Is this the same one we're thinking of?
Yes, yes.
What was the first name?
Patrick.
It's his son.
Oh.
Did he mention in there, Ross, in that letter, if he thought we had a reasonable case, iffy case?
I didn't, I didn't provide him with that.
Oh, you didn't get any of that pertinent information, okay.
I, I gave, I gave the League enough of an outline, so they understood what we were looking for by way of attorneys, but I didn't get any details.
I was just curious if he did.
Okay, any questions in regard to that update?
Sound like we're moving on.
Can we expect, let's see, when would, when would you have more for the next meeting, or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Two weeks, two weeks from now, okay.
Sure, yes.
Okay, be looking on the agenda for that item then, two weeks from now again. Moving on then to new business, service agreement with TruGreen. Hello, Kirby, welcome. Let's see, we've got two versions of.
Yes, we do. I asked for a version with fertilizer just for the community center and Four Seasons Park, being the most visual and used, I think, of, of the rest of them. Along with the broadleaf control, which, that's the only thing we did this spring. But, Mark Sullivan, the guy that, that I've been working with from TruGreen, he really believes in, in the fall treatment for broadleaf and for fertilizer of, of your lawns, and he says, once you start this cycle of doing this in the fall, you won't need to treat in the spring. So the idea is from here on out to start, you know, if, if we can go along with, with TruGreen yet, just to apple, do the applications in the fall. And the other one I just threw in with all of the parks. And leaving out the other properties for the fertilizer.
Except for Fairview.
Except for Fairview, yeah. That one is, that, to me, looks pretty good. I don't see a whole lot of weeds after we treat it for broadleaf.
So is these two thousand dollar figures or thirty-four hundred in the case of the, doing the other parks, is that a per year or is that for the three years?
That's per year.
Per year.
That's per app, per application.
Per application.
Yeah, and if, there was a, a note on that, on that quote about a three-year lock-in price.
Okay.
So that'd be our price for through two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
And my personal opinion on it, I thought they did a great job. Since I started here, we haven't compared to being able to treat our lawns the way that they are, the way that they are capable of with our equipment and, and the manpower, I mean. They're able to just get here on their window and do it when the weather's right and without and we're then able to, you know, do work elsewhere, especially in spring and fall when it's the busiest time of the year for us. It would be nice to just have to do this once a year and contract it, in my opinion. And, and I think people respond to when the parks look nice like that. I think that's a valuable thing for people.
Memorial Parks looked as nice as it has ever looked this year. Not the stunting that people mowing lawn and trimming, but, man, there's no dandelions. It really looks nice.
My mowers, uh, my, my part-time mowers too have heard a lot of comments from people, that they bring back to me that. I mean, they maybe saw one or two dandelions. They're starting to be dandelions poking out now for the fall, but throughout the summer, very, very few.
And I understand the cemetery was in tough shape too, was creeping Charlie, wasn't it?
Yes.
Just terrible.
And that has gotten pretty well under control too. I still think we can do spot treatments ourself in the springtime. Our department, with that as needed. And with the fertilizer too, that should really help with issues with our clover.
Then the argument on the other side is we want to be friendly parks.
Bee-friendly?
Yeah.
Well, the bees can have a heyday over at the wastewater treatment plant. That's a lot of, a lot of, there's plenty of spots I see yet with clover. And plenty of lawns in town too, I think. Mine, mine included.
I know you said with the fall, with the fall application, I do all my yard work in the fall, I have for years. I don't know that you could beat it. I just don't know.
He, this, Mark Sullivan was adamant about, he said, this first year that we do this would be our, our most extensive, our most expensive spring and fall, but he said from here on out, we should just have to do fall.
I know you read any university publication that says the same thing, you get the best kill on weeds in fall and.
Yep. And I mean, moving forward down the road, if we want to invest in a little different equipment, still do it ourselves again, I mean, that's an option, but it would be really nice to be able to, to do this this year yet. Or if we'd wanna do that agreement the next three years.
Do we, do we know what it costs the city? If the city were to apply everything in the fall? And how much the equipment cost would be?
That I haven't, I haven't done a real meticulous breakdown of, but I, I've ballparked it, and it's, we could probably get it done for a thousand dollars less, but again, our attention can also be spent elsewhere that we're not otherwise getting at.
Well, and the only other thing is, is that they can walk out there a month before they're gonna do it, and they can look at the weeds that are in there, or whatever they need to address, and they know the chemicals to change.
That's true.
A little more of this, a little more of that, where nobody in the city staff's ever going to have that knowledge. Short of a lot of schooling.
Yep.
So they're gonna end up with a better job, I really feel.
And just doing it in the past, it was my job to spray it, with a forty-hour work week, and then you're, you're getting pulled other directions, and then the weather isn't right, and it's, it's hard to do a good job at it. And they have the equipment to be able to get around all the cemetery stones and all the trees and all the gardens and stuff like that. We'd really have to take a lot of time if we wanted to be that detailed with, with the equipment we have now.
Well, you know, I, I think our city has a very, you know, has a right to be proud of their parks the way they look, and when I look at the the price for putting fertilizer on some of the other parks too, in addition to the Four Seasons and Community Center, I think along with that, we, we have to sort of say, we like the, we would like the Four Seasons and the Community Center to really look nice, but we really don't care if the other ones don't look quite as nice.
Well.
And I don't think that's the mentality that the city has with the care of their parks.
I agree, and that's why I went back and asked for the other parks.
Yeah.
And really, if, if we wouldn't fertilize at all, it would be, it would be twenty-eight hundred bucks. So we're looking at six hundred more dollars to fertilize five of our parks, or four of our parks in our community center.
Yep.
Do they do all that in one application?
When they do it this spring, no, oh, you mean do they combine the fertilizer?
They're gonna combine the fertilizer with the chemical.
They, they can bring two different tanks, yep, doing it one shot.
I know they do look nice, no doubt about that.
And that's something that we've been promoting for years.
I'll make a motion that we approve the updated version to fertilize and do weed control on all the parks.
I'll second it.
For the three-year?
Three-year contract.
Yes, and that's based on the parks listed on the, on the quote given?
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Me.
You did, alright. The one at the green shirt on.
Thank you.
Do we wanna make off what parks are involved or?
Great job, Tuesday.
Okay, motion by council member Highland, second by council member Yashewski, to go ahead with TruGreen for beginning in twenty seventeen and for three years, at a cost of three thousand four hundred and nine dollars a year for fall, fall fertilization and broadleaf weed control on five of the city parks listed in their quote. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carried. Alright, department updates, maintenance department update.
Come on down.
Okay. So, since the last time I gave you an update, one of the main things that went on was our hot patching and seal coating. Miller's, Miller and Sons did the hot patching, and that, that actually came in four thousand dollars over the quote that we had accepted. And largely due to when they were milling a lot of these spots, specifically on Clinton Street, East Clinton, more material was busting up than they had anticipated. The roads were in such bad shape, so they had to use, they quoted us at fifty-three tons of material. They wound up using a hundred and three. So they pretty much doubled it, but they were willing to eat the majority of that cost. And so we got charged about four thousand dollars more. It wound up being nineteen thousand eight hundred. The quote was fifteen thousand six hundred and fifty. And a few of these was after the fact. I had added some spots to that were missed. But when I called and told them about the spots, and he'd said, well, that's about a thousand dollars worth of work, and I said, well, that's, okay, that shouldn't throw us out of whack with our budget or anything like that. So actually I was, that was a pretty great gesture of them, I think, to eat a lot of that, and I thought they did a great job. They stayed late on a Friday. They were here till about seven o'clock, finishing up all the areas. And the anticipation was they weren't gonna get done with a lot of the spots on the north end of town, but they made sure to stay late and get that done, so. I'd like to commend Miller's on that. I thought they did a great job in working with us on that. Another big ticket item, weed spraying in the streets, which I've been trying to get at. One of the critical times for spraying, I was out for a week or seven days, having our third child. So I'm not quite done with that. I'd say seventy-five percent of the city has sprayed the roads. So that has to get finished up yet. Been working on the budget, making a few adjustments here and there. I know for sure I can cut a couple things out that will help us out. Columbarium is here. I know Mr. Mayor, you, your attention got brought to some vandalism we had. Somebody had already moved one of the granite benches that we had set in place. So we bought some heavy-duty construction adhesive that should work really well for actually just gluing them to the concrete. That, we should get done tomorrow.
Can I send you a reply on that as far as location?
Yeah, yep, thanks for doing that, yeah, yep. Yep, we should get those set tomorrow. Other than that, Trevor Lotzky has been really busy trying to keep the trees watered. It's that time of the year that it's getting dry and, and the trees need attention. We have sixty trees planted. That's about a day's worth of work right there, just trying to fill up all the water bags. So he's been trying to keep up with that. Our north side, you may have noticed the crabapple trees that were planted out there did not take. And those were bare root crabapples from this old house, and they got a bad batch from Bailey's Nursery. So she gets reimbursed for that, and she offered us at no cost, three other trees that we can plant. They're hydrangea trees. So we're looking to do that tomorrow as well, get those replaced. Mosquito spraying, I think I've done it three times, got done the whole town since I gave you an update last. For the most part, I haven't heard too much complaining, but I think it's been a good year overall for mosquitoes anyways.
Just the opposite. I've heard people saying, we don't have a mosquito problem, and I appreciate you going out as, when you do.
It seems to be real selective, cause I've been trying to be diligent on asking around how the mosquitoes are. I'm sure on the outskirts, they're bad.
Oh, man, they just thought, carry me away.
Do they really? Oh, okay. Yeah, can't get everywhere with my truck, but.
Did you get over to the fairgrounds this week?
Yep, fairgrounds are sprayed, yep.
The races last night and around the food pavilions, and I didn't, no mosquitoes.
Okay, good. So it's, it's, the spray is working, I think, it should be. So, but we've been lucky with a good year or two, I think. They just don't seem to be too bad. What's that?
You're happy with the pellets we were talking about?
On the mosquito, yeah, yeah, I, we are, yep. We applied them to some of our parks and we used them out at the Sportsman's Park where they seemed, the mosquitoes seemed to bloom quicker, it was just low-lying water. They seem, the mosquitoes seem to bloom quicker, it's just low lying water and stuff over there, but it seemed to work out there. Uh, I was just gonna say the parks, uh, I know my, I've mentioned that already, our mowers have been getting compliments on our parks and. In my humble opinion, I think they have been looking pretty good this year. My mowers commend them as well, they, they do a good job.
Their, their lines are straight too.
Yep, yep, they, they really take a lot of pride in it.
From what I see, it looks like they're doing a heck of a job.
Yeah, yeah, they've been good workers. Uh, looking forward, next couple months, uh, we gotta take some trees down in town that are hazardous. We have about twenty-five stumps that have to be ground up. We're going to do some trimming of limbs along the streets, there's an ordinance that you need fourteen foot clearance over the streets and. We hit a lot of branches when we're sweeping, so we know that that's not. So we got a lot of cleaning up to do there. Uh, curb painting, I hope to get at that within the next couple weeks, get all our, our yellow curbs painted around town. And then along with that, crosswalks too, and that has to be done before school, so. Tree planting is coming up for the city, that's September thirtieth. All the volunteers and stuff like that, I think a lot of them are going back in boulevards, if I remember right, not our parks this year. Along with that, since I'm here, I just, I just thought about it, um, the U of M stopped by. With a couple of their tree study team people and. They ca, they stopped by to, to, to measure the trees and he asked if he could come again at a later date with a drone. To fly a drone and take analysis of the tree canopies, measure them that way. Do we have an ordinance against drones? I thought so. Oh, you did, okay, so can he have special permission to use that for that reason?
Yeah, I think there's a permit application. It doesn't, it doesn't prevent drones, it controls drone use. Something like that, city concerned, it gives permission.
Okay, so he needs a permit?
So, nobody flies their drone into, looks in Jim's window?
And I'd also mentioned in, when I sent you the, um, ordinance that, you know, we can do some promotion, let, like dispatch know and. And that, police department and stuff, so if they do get some calls, then they can answer that right away. So we can try and get that out and about so that the public's not concerned to see. That flying above.
Okay, good, yeah, I told him I can't promise you it won't get shot down.
We'll try and avoid that.
Other than that, uh, just one more thing, and we're gonna look at trying to nip away at our brush pile, it's getting really big again, so I think we're gonna start burning it bit by bit.
I think, girl.
It's, it's.
I don't know where all that stuff comes from. Do we still have the camera out there so we know who's going in and going out? We stopped using, the camera didn't work?
I don't know.
Tony had put one out there, I thought.
There was one out there last summer.
Do you know if it's still?
I haven't put that out. I hadn't thought of that, sorry, I'll get that out.
God, and the only reason I mentioned it, and I don't know how you tell unless you got the license plate number. I had one citizen tell me, I see one guy going in there dumping all the time and he's not from town. I said, why don't you write his license number down and give it to me? But I haven't seen that yet either. So I know there's people dumping out there, that shouldn't be dumping out there.
Another, as long as we're on security cameras, that's one thing that, uh, Building Inspector Haslip mentioned to me when he inspected the, uh. The final inspection for the, the Lion Center, the building remodel. He said, being you've put all this money into this building, he said it'd be a shame if you don't protect it with security cameras. So, nothing we have to decide now, but maybe next year's budget should have some security cameras for that.
You combined it pretty reasonably.
Yeah.
Kathy Holme put a system in the library and I don't think it was very expensive.
Are you, are you talking in, indoor cameras or?
No, well, no, for the out, you know, that vandalism on the outside. Be, be broken windows or graffiti or. Yeah, and also probably in the, uh, the, the large stating, skating rink shed. Something like that that would cover that whole area.
There was someone doing vandalism, you'd get it.
Yeah. Along with signage, you know, and sometimes you put the signs up alone, that's gonna cut down on. Who tries what. Any comments on seal coating?
I. One resident was not too happy about, um. The seal coating running into the project and not, them not having a spot to park. But really, I, I spoke with her and, you know, listened to her concerns and, and. Reassured her it would be done, as soon as it was seal coated, you can drive on it. So I think she only had to park away from her home for maybe a couple hours, two hours or so. Yeah, they, they did it pretty timely, it went pretty quick and. From what I saw, I think they did a good job.
Did you know when they were coming? Did they let you know a few days ahead of time?
They let me know. It was tentative up to the day before. They, they called me and let me know for sure they were starting the next day.
There were also questions I know regarding the, um, it being seal coated on last, the last project, the two thousand fifteen project. And they did follow up with Jason, he said, yeah, that's very typical that within a year or two after, you do go through and do a seal coat after to protect it, so.
That is not, it was not abnormal then, alright.
No, nope.
Good, cause that's probably one of the biggest complaints I had was, if we did a new street project, why are we seal coating it right away?
It has to be done or, or the, the water will just pit it and then it'll be holes right away, so. That's all I had for you.
Uh, as far as the trees that were planted last fall, I noticed there's some at Four Seasons Park just didn't take, or I think they were, they were oak trees and they all have a little tag on it. Are they gonna, are the trees that didn't green up this year gonna be identified and, and somehow replaced? Or what, because I know that isn't, doesn't someone come out from?
Yeah, they were just here yesterday, yesterday looking at, so I left them up for that reason, because I think they wanted to. To see them, so.
Are they the ones that, that are gonna call the shots on that, or do we need to be ordering replacement trees or?
They basically, well, that, that's on us to, to replace them with. And they're so, they're so new to their studies that they. Essentially, these studies are supposed to be able to help guide communities towards what trees are successful. You know, where, you know, different parts of the state, you know. Down the road, you'll be able to kinda know what trees you should be buying. I think we got a pretty good idea already, just based on our last two years of our rock bed down at the shop. Last year, the white oaks, the white swamp oaks had the hard time.
Yeah, those are the ones.
That's the majority of the ones you see that didn't, that didn't sprout. Right, so far we got a hundred percent success on our rock bed. They're, they're all leafing out.
Yes, I noticed, it looks pretty good, I was down there today and looked.
Could be a different deal when you plant them, but.
Alright, any other questions for Kirby?
Keep up the good work.
They keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Committee Updates. Are there any?
Well, I have a few notes written down, thinking Todd was gonna present this tonight.
Dan, would you pull your microphone around so I can hear a little better?
Is that better? We had, uh, the quarterly discussion was on doing, uh. How we're doing in the market share and, uh. All statistics pointed to, we're doing very well with, uh. The number of patients that we're working with and compared to the other hospitals around and. This was presented by Lisa Steinbauer, Director of Community Relations. Um, they're looking, as you know, the. It's a, we're having a hard time keeping doctors in the rural. And there are reasons like there aren't as many people to pick from, so the percentage. There, there just aren't the bodies there. Uh, people. Prefer to go to the city than this rural area in some places. But, um, the, we're working on. If we, what they're trying to do is they're gonna, uh, buy a recruiting tool. And they didn't go into it, but if with just one hire in two thousand seventeen, it would pay for the recruiting tool, whatever that is. So they're working hard on trying to get the doctors here, cause I've, have heard a number of complaints about. Having to be months out before you can see your doctor at your facility. Um, and so they wanna improve on that. And Mike Phelps, uh, is the new CEO. He just. Gave a little insight of what he was gonna be all about. Replacing Bob Stevens and, and the success he's had and the years of service he gave. Will be, uh, a challenge, but I've been impressed with Mike. And, uh, I think he'll do a great job for Ridgeview. And, uh, the morning, or the, the meeting wasn't too long there either, and that's all I have written down.
Did you say Mike was, uh, he's been with Ridgeview for a number of years already?
Oh, in the teens.
Oh, okay.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, something like that.
Okay. Thank you, anyone else?
Looks like the street project is coming along pretty decent, um, think over on, um. Traveling on top of it, they'll probably have a flat top garden gutter by Friday night.
That's quick.
But I can hope.
Next Friday night.
Next Friday.
And on that lines, I had, um, one citizen comment about how impressed he was with. Uh, the contractor we chose this year versus the, the one from last.
Really?
Time, because this one does all their work themselves versus, um, I think, was it William and Miller did the last one? They contracted, subcontracted some of the other stuff out, so, um, it's a little smoother this time.
Charge, charge pretty much covers her from one end. The only thing that they don't do, I know when they did my street, was the grass seeding or grass replacement. Other than that, they have a crew for everything. They're about as neat as they can be. They do a very good job.
Sounds like everybody's able to get in and out of their driveways at the end of the day for the most part and. Couple times I think people had to park out on another street, but. The crews are, seem to be pretty good about. Working with the residents.
And I heard good reports about the, uh. The fact that it was a funeral in Methodist Church the other day and they were very accommodating in getting the people into and out of the parking lot, church parking lot.
Did they go in on a new alleyway or is that not done yet?
Well, they went on an alleyway. But not a new one, so, uh, but I think that was a, yeah, that was the most logical way in is through the, through the alley.
That's what I heard also.
All right, from the highway, so. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I have one, you brought up about maybe two months ago with the cable commission as far as their. You weren't wondering if they had a budget, but you were wondering. You could, you need to call Mark Erickson.
I was sort of looking for a financial statement from previous years.
They don't have one. No, you need to go to Mark Erick, I brought this up numerous times. And if you want a piece of paper or.
No, no, that's, that's fine.
What you need to do is call Mark, it's complicated ordeal here. I don't know why it needs to be that way, but it is. If you call, he said, Mark asked me for you to call him. And he will give you some web addresses or some place to go to, that's where you're gonna have to find it. Yeah, I know Ross, it's a different deal.
You couldn't have delivered that address to him.
It was so complicated, it's easy, Mark said, just have the mayor contact me. Uh, email might work. He's the Winthropedia Director.
I, I have his email address.
And Mark will, I know, give you everything you need, but as far as a form, no, no such thing.
I think the thing that surprises me is you have a pseudo organization, um. Governmental organization that has to report to no one.
Correct.
That's what surprises me.
They can pretty much do. I mean, there's some laws in place, but.
Yeah, and, well, see, it's, it's, it's a joint powers board and Arlington has certain options. If we're not satisfied, we can pull out. One thing I guess that disturbed me was that, uh, this was originally set up with MediaCom. And when RS Fiber and Mark Erickson got involved, they basically made a power grab and all of a sudden they're controlling it. But most or all of the funds that they built up over the years have been franchise fees from MediaCom. And Arlington's, uh, contribution to that is quite large. And so I guess, uh, our previous representative to the board had been, uh, uh. Contemplating the thought, which I don't think he ever brought to the council, about whether or not Arlington, with, with the new cable system setups. Maybe it's time for Arlington to go its separate way and just have a, a franchise agreement, Arlington and MediaCom. And whatever franchise fees MediaCom pays, they stay in Arlington and Arlington uses them. But complicating that further though is that it is a countywide system. So, it's a mess.
I, I agree with you totally because. Every time I'm at one of the board meetings, it seems like the. Communities that have RS Fiber are the biggest benefactors. And I've been sitting down a couple weeks ago and I started just jotting things down of what it's costing the city of Arlington. What our benefits are. And is it really beneficial for Arlington to belong to the cable commission? I'm not so sure that, that, I have my doubts, but I haven't crunched the numbers. So I'm trying to find the benefits other than the school gets, say, six thousand and the library gets a thousand and same. Uh, the private school, the Lutheran school gets a thousand and if we look at what we pay in. We could, now granted, we got this here, but you know, that only happens every so often. And if you look at what we're paying versus what we're getting money wise, we're coming out the short end of the stick. Now I'm trying to figure out where are our other benefits? Other than financial.
Well, that was my vague understanding as well that, uh, we get back about half of the franchise fees that we put in. On average, year by year, so we're basically carrying the other communities.
And they, and they have a fat checkbook. They have a fat checkbook.
Well, and that was another issue, I guess it came up at one time at least, and again, this is off the top of my head. I think, uh, my understanding was they had like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in reserve and they hadn't been spending it on anything.
Pretty close to that, yeah, that number's still pretty close. It's well over a hundred thousand. And I, I wonder why is it sitting in the checkbook?
Yeah, what are the long range plans?
We're here for benefits, you know, I mean, it's when we had the problem in here and whether we still do or not. With when you listen to the YouTube videos or whatever, or the people in the community, citizens are watching this, they can't hear. I asked from February till now, we need to get this addressed, well, Wade Warner didn't get too much addressed. Mark finally said, we gotta get this resolved, I'm not sure if it's resolved or not. It's like pulling teeth trying to get him to do something, now we paid you all this money. And I just, I, I just keep seeing the, if you're RS Fiber person or community. The benefits are wonderful, but well, it's always, well, we have to make an exception for Arlington and all. The benefits are wonderful, but well, it's always, well, we have to make an exception for Arlington and all that. So yeah, I've been kinda digging into it and it might take me another month or two.
Okay. Do you understand what you've come up with? Alright, any other discussion? Hearing none, uh motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
Motion by Congress. Highland, second by council member Halsted to adjourn the meeting, all papers say aye? P眾no? Motion adjourned at six forty-one. And our next meeting is seven o'clock, so twenty minutes.
Does he get some of that drunk?
Yeah, we'll go up to Park Jim.
We got a half hour, we got time for beer.
Let's go.
Go to the park, you can, may I remember Ross said, if you just sit on the bench and have a couple, it's okay.